Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, October 20th. It is 7:00 and this is the Moscow City Council regular meeting. And we will start off with Art.
Please rise and join me with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. And the second thing on the agenda, we'll start with the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Okay, Walter made a motion to approve. It was seconded by Wayne. We'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, the amendments are approved. Second thing, Staff Recognition Report. Gary Reeder, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm always pleased at this time of year that I'm able to bring Don Palmer up before you. Don, could you come approach the podium, please?
Are you as pleased as Don?
I couldn't be more pleased. I'm here today on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting that has been awarded to the city of Moscow by the GFPA and to Don Palmer and the Finance Department. And I'll read part of the press release. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The award given this year is our, should I say Don's and his staff's, as well as the city of Moscow's, 11th consecutive award for our consolidated annual financial, comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, which is, if you use the acronym often enough, you forget what the words mean. At any rate, Don and his staff once again have achieved that award. There are not very many organizations in the state of Idaho that get this award.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you, Don. And the GFPA represents 17,500 governments, governmental accounting entities nationwide. So it's a big organization, so it means a lot, and it shows the excellence of our staff, and certainly we appreciate the hard work of the Finance Department and Don in particular as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think Bill is going to snap a photo. Mayor, could I have you come down?
You've got to be in the middle, Don. That's sandwiched.
We want to keep the heat right on here, Don, at all times. Eleven, he's gone for 25. This is eleven, he's got 14 at least more.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Don. As Gary had mentioned too, you know, it's Don and his fine staff, so collectively, he's got a number of people that work underneath of him that make this all possible as well, but it's with Don's leadership, so.
Yes, the award certainly, it's got Don's name on it, but it belongs to everybody down in finance, and it also belongs to the city itself, the council for implementing policies for good financial accounting. So those things, as we bring those through, those are all intended to make sure that we meet those standards. So, again, congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next, I would like to introduce our fire chief, new fire chief, Brian Nickerson, and we have a special certificate that we would like to present this evening. Chief.
Mayor, council. If I can have Division Chief Joe Williams come up. Joe put in a lot of time over the time where Chief Button had left and then I came on, so wanted to just show a little certificate of appreciation for Joe and the hard work that you did in keeping the ship at least upright. And they wobbled at times, but at least you kept it upright. But the certificate is basically a certificate of appreciation to Joe Williams in recognition of your extraordinary service to our community as interim fire chief and for going above and beyond the call of duty during times of transition. So, on behalf of the city, the fire department, we'd like to present you with this certificate.
Thank you very much.
Stand up, Joe.
You want this open?
Sure.
All right. See, I don't know if I can do that or not, but we'll see.
There you go.
Well, about a bunch of forced smiles.
If I can just say, you know, I want to say it about Joe, you know, as a member of the department, Joe's one of the reasons that I enjoy being in the department, having a guy like him being in the command staff, so appreciate it, Joe, and Debbie says the same thing, so.
And Joe, I think, you know, myself is, the mayor and the rest of the council up here, including Dan, is very happy with the job you did and respect what you did, and you did fill in in between Chief Button's retirement and Chief Nickerson coming on duty, so thank you very much. We all very much appreciate what you did for us, Joe. It did not go unnoticed, that's the point. We all thank you. Okay, moving on, now is the time for public comment and mayor's response period. We set this time aside for folks that want to get up and speak to us, as long as there's not things on the agenda tonight or something coming before planning and zoning and/or the Board of Adjustments, you can come up and speak to us. Okay, well, folks, we're going to move on. The next thing I'm going to talk about is a proclamation, and it's called Extra Mile Day Proclamation. Whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within an entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which engages, encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with total effort, commitment, and conviction of their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and whereas Moscow, Idaho is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community, and whereas Moscow, Idaho acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2014, and now therefore I, Bill Lambert, Mayor of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2014 as Extra Mile Day in Moscow, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, family, community, country, or world a better place. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to item four, which is standards of childcare in Idaho. Gary, will you introduce?
Yes, and just a short introduction. We're lucky enough to have tonight to have Beth Oppenheimer, the Director of the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children with us, and she will be talking to us for a time about standards of childcare in Idaho and how the city of Moscow can help raise that standard. As you know, many years ago, Moscow was one of the first cities in the state of Idaho to have a daycare ordinance, and it was a long process. I was city attorney at the time and got a lot of input from the Early Learning Center at the University of Idaho, local daycare providers, and a lot of parents. So that ordinance has been essentially changing over the years. We've had several iterations that we've tried to meet better practices, and it's worked out very well so far. So now the state of Idaho is becoming just a little more proactive, and I hope that Ms. Oppenheimer is here to help enlighten us.
Can I put my water here?
Yes. We're all relaxed and Beth will welcome.
Good evening. Okay, well, I'm going to start this real quick, so she gave me a little tutorial, and I didn't listen well.
No, we do that to people, we just try to. We like to test them out, Beth.
Yeah.
Put them on the spot right at the beginning.
There we go, and then I want to go. Gosh, you're so helpful, thank you. The anticipation, right? Got it. Pointers to the green, got it. Okay, we're all set. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me be here tonight. I appreciate it. My name is Beth Oppenheimer, and I have the privilege of directing the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children. We're a nonprofit organization, statewide organization. We work to improve the quality of childcare throughout Idaho. Tonight I am here to talk about how we are working with various communities and cities throughout Idaho to incorporate healthy initiatives into childcare, so we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. Healthy Childcare Challenge. I would like to start by challenging all of you as individuals, for those of you who work with or work for organizations, and especially community leaders, and ask yourselves and challenge yourselves to see what you can do to improve the health of childcare environments here in Moscow. Want to talk a little bit about what childcare looks like in Idaho, and we had a little brief introduction about that, but currently in Idaho, Idaho has its own state standards. Fortunately, or I should say unfortunately, Idaho's state standards continue to rank last in the country, and when I say that, I mean 52nd in the country in terms of childcare standards, and when I say 52nd, I mean behind Puerto Rico and Guam. Fortunately, we have eight cities throughout Idaho that have stepped up to have strengthened childcare licensing standards, and I would like to applaud the city of Moscow for your continuing effort in having strengthened childcare standards, so thank you for that. Want to talk a little bit about the role of childcare for healthy children and what that looks like. We want to really talk about the basics of childhood obesity. So throughout our country, we all know that obesity is continuing to be an epidemic here in this country, and I want to show a couple of maps produced by the CDC, and we're going to start in 1990, and if you look at this map, you'll see that in Idaho in 1990, and we're looking at adults, between 10% and 14% of our adults were considered overweight or obese. That was in 1990. As we continue to move forward in 2000, you'll see that that number increases, and between 15% and 19% of our adults in Idaho were considered obese or overweight. We'll move on to 2010, and you'll see that that number continues to increase, and in Idaho, we're looking at now about 25% to 29% of our adults are considered overweight or obese. And I don't know if you noticed, but that color chart at the bottom, the CDC had to continue to add colors because the numbers got so high. So here's, all said and done, it looks like we've got a huge problem and an epidemic here in Idaho. Talking about what's happening with our Idaho kids, and what we know is that children between 2 and 19 years old here in Idaho, 1 in 3 of our children are overweight or obese. These are some statistics for Idaho, and we know that obesity oftentimes it can last a lifetime, and right now, children between the ages of 2 and 4 years old in Idaho, 25% are overweight or obese. Third grade students, 30% are overweight or obese, and you'll see the number for high school students at 23%, and that's because the statistic that we have, the high school students, those were self-reporting, but we know that from pediatricians and doctors that do the weight and measurement, that that number is really closer to 30%, and then you'll see today in Idaho, adults, 63% are overweight or obese. Obesity can obviously cause a lot of challenges for both children and adults, and we know that there are some children that are overweight or obese, but the fact is that they're undernourished at the same time, and that means that they're not getting the proper nutrients to develop properly, and nutrition deficiencies really, really affect brain development and cognitive functioning in children, and it really affects their learning. Physical inactivity, children who are not active have been known to have more behavioral problems and disciplinary problems. They tend to have a shorter attention span in class, and it's really challenging for our children who are not exposed to a lot of physical activity at a young age. Screen time, we've heard a lot about screen time, especially with the development of all the new technology and everything. We know that screen time for our youngest children really affects their brain development, and it interferes with their creative thought process, and it interferes with their playing and interaction with others, and it competes with being active and reading and also doing homework. In addition, obesity, there are obviously some other health consequences that go with that. Certain diseases and health problems can occur when children and adults have overweight or obese issues. It leads to heart disease, type 2 diabetes, plethora of other diseases that could be prevented. The good news is, that was kind of doom and gloom, but the good news is, is that the choices that we make are shaped by the choices that we have, and childcare can make a very big difference in our children. Childcare, as you know, plays an important role for our communities. Childcare allows our parents to work. We're seeing more and more families working. We're seeing a lot of single mothers that need to work, and they need a health and safety environment for their children while they work or go to school. We know that prevention must start early, and we also know that children are spending many hours in childcare. In the state of Idaho, we know that about 60% of our children under the age of 5 are in some type of childcare setting throughout the day while their parents are able to work or go to school. Children who eat healthy and nutritious food during every meal can stay healthy and have the energy to learn, which is super important as our children grow. Activity promotes brain development, we talked a little bit about that. One thing that's important to note here with our youngest children is that the brain develops 90% by the time a child reaches 5 years old, and that's a pretty big statistic, and so if we think about how we're engaging our children in activities and healthy and nutritious meals, how that can play a big part in their brain development at that very young age. We can help children build healthy habits for life. We know that if we can start as far upstream as possible, we have a better chance of ensuring that our children develop healthy habits as they grow into adults. The food preferences and physical activity that are introduced in early childhood, it can often continue into adulthood. Also, our childcare providers serve as role models for our children. Children are always, always looking at what's happening with their providers, and they like to act as they do, and so if we have our childcare providers who are engaging in movement and eating healthy and nutritious meals, if our children see that happening, they'll too want to do that. Also, it's important to note that providers play a unique role in family engagement. In high-quality early learning programs, it is imperative that you have that connection of family engagement, and the provider and the parent has such a unique relationship, and it really, it's kind of like the old saying, "It takes a village," it really does in this instance. There are a lot of resources to help with childcare providers. Obviously, Idaho AYC through our Idaho Stars Project, we offer a lot of professional development and training to childcare providers to educate them and help them develop tools that they need to ensure that our children are being active and healthy. Also, our NA EYC accredited programs and our home provider accredited programs, they follow the highest standards in childcare. There's also the Idaho Child and Adult Care Food Program, otherwise known as CACFP, which provides a lot of nutrition materials, posters, resources for childcare providers, and one of the biggest ones that we have been using is Let's Move Childcare, and Let's Move Childcare is a component of Let's Move, and I know that the city of Moscow is a Let's Move city, and so the Let's Move Childcare is just a component of that. And what Let's Move Childcare does, it focuses on five different areas. It focuses on physical activity, screen time, food and nutrition, beverages, and infant feeding. And what Let's Move Childcare is, it's a resource for parents and providers to get tools that they need to incorporate healthy initiatives into their programs. So now we want to talk a little bit about suggested childcare policy for the city of Moscow. As I said, Moscow really is one of the leaders in the state in terms of higher standards for childcare, but I think that there's another, a little piece that might be missing, and I want to talk about some opportunities that we can have here in Moscow to incorporate some healthy initiatives. We recently went through this in the city of Boise. I live in Boise, although Idaho AYC is a statewide organization. We kind of piloted this in Boise, and I just want to give a little background on how this worked in Boise. Idaho AYC, along with the Blue Cross Foundation and our local help district, we partnered to put on some Let's Move Childcare workshops, and when we first started this process, it was about almost two years ago, we developed these workshops, they were three-day workshops. We were hoping to get 35 providers to take these workshops. We had no idea what to expect. It ended up that the registration filled up in about an hour, and we had about 70 providers that were on the waiting list, that were really excited and wanting to take these workshops. So we did that. We met with major stakeholders, we met with pediatricians, hospitals, we met with insurance companies, local businesses, to kind of run this idea by them. What would you think if we did some sort of healthy initiatives with our youngest children? We met with the mayor individually and each city council member to run the idea past them, and the most important thing that we did is we got feedback from childcare providers, because we wanted to make sure that whatever initiative we did, we had to have the buy-in from the childcare providers. So we talked with them, we had surveys, we surveyed every single childcare provider in Boise, and we also interviewed about 30 of them personally. Then we crafted some policy based on their feedback, and we held open houses, the city had some work sessions, and we also had some public hearings, and at the end of the day, we were able to pass a healthy childcare policy just recently, in the past couple weeks, that we knew that childcare providers, that families would support, and the city of Boise would support as well. It was a very long process, but going through all that, we worked out the kinks, we learned what worked and what didn't work, and so we felt that that was a pretty good way to go. So let's talk about what those healthy childcare initiatives are. There's four pieces to it. The first piece is incorporating physical activity into the childcare programs a day. And when I say incorporating physical activity, it's not about, it's more about just incorporating it rather than adding it, and so when we talk about, we don't talk about, oh, make sure that children are running laps around the building or doing push-ups every day. What we're talking about is how can we engage the children in physical activity into things that they're already doing, such as if they're having story time, have the children get up and act out the story and see what that looks like, and some other ways, and we want to make sure that that physical activity is both indoor and outdoor play. The second part of the initiative is limiting screen time, and unfortunately, our children are in front of screens a lot, and we want to make sure that when they are in childcare, that we limit that as much as possible. This was one area that we really took the childcare providers' feedback. There are a lot of home providers that relied on a TV or some sort of screen time while they're making lunch or preparing meals for their children. The national standard is no screen time, but we were able to make some compromise, and we ended up with allowing one hour of screen time a day, or up to five hours a week. The third part of this initiative is nutrition standards for meals and snacks, and what this looks like is, we really wanted to make sure that everyone had the same opportunities to follow the same standards, and we decided at the end of the day, it best to follow the USDA Child and Adult Food Care Program, or Food Program, excuse me, and because those standards sometimes change, and so what we're looking at is that childcare providers ensure that they're following those guidelines. There are some programs in Boise, the food care, the CACFP food programs in Boise, their nutrition works in under the umbrella. I'm not sure what you have here in Moscow, but if those providers are already engaged with that, then they wouldn't be checked upon inspection. And then the fourth piece of the initiative is infant feeding. We know that breastfeeding for infants is one of the healthiest ways for their development. Unfortunately, a lot of mothers, they stop nursing when they go back to school or work because it's really hard to manage, and it's oftentimes not met, it's not welcomed by the childcare provider. So what this part of the initiative says is that the childcare program will have a safe and dedicated place for mothers to continue to breastfeed if they choose to do so. It's not mandated, it's just if they choose to do so, and to help mothers transition to work a little bit more effectively. Implementation and enforcement, like I said, we just piloted this in Boise and went through almost two years of what this would look like, and I know that every community is different, and I would never suggest that everything has to be the same in every city. I think that if we were to move in this direction, we would want to look at our local communities to see how it would fit best in our local communities. But some examples of what we are, what the city of Boise is doing is take a year to roll out the policy, and part of that is to, the Let's Move Childcare workshops, they were three days, we condensed those into a four-hour training that all of the directors of the program are going to be required to take. We do that not as, not necessarily as a mandate, but more as a resource, because we wanted to make sure that we weren't throwing out a policy and saying, "Here, good luck, try to figure it out." We want to make sure that childcare providers are successful, and they have every tool and resource they need to be successful in order to implement these policies into their licensing. Excuse me. The review of policies upon city inspection, what this looks like is the city inspectors who already go out and do the annual inspections, they will look at those four categories. For instance, the physical activity, what that could look like is just looking at their weekly schedule and asking the provider, "So where do you incorporate some of the physical activity into your program?" The menu, they just look at the menu for the week to ensure that it's following the standards. The screen time, that can be as easy as the childcare program in their handbook or policies that say to the parents, "We only allow an hour of screen time a day in our program." And then the infant feeding, it's just ensuring that they have that dedicated space. So we also wanted to make sure that the city inspectors weren't overtaxed in following these regulations, because we all know they have so many things that they have to look at. So we really worked with the inspectors in the city as well to make sure that this wasn't an extra burden on them. And then also, what the city of Boise and a lot of other states are doing, is they're incorporating this into the website. What they do is kind of like restaurant compliance, and you can look to see what are the restaurants that are complying with the policies, doing the same for childcare, and showing out of these four initiatives which childcare programs are following these guidelines. The one good thing about The one good thing about this initiative that we feel really good about is that you don't lose your license if you don't comply with these standards. It's more of a market-driven approach, and so parents that are looking for childcare can look on the website to see which program, and if that is important as a parent, for them to have the healthy nutrition, the physical activity, then they can choose a program that is following those guidelines. So it's more of a market-driven approach. There's no penalty for not actually complying with these. So I ask you again, after all of that, to challenge yourselves to think, especially as community leaders, what you can do to improve the health of childcare environments here in the city of Moscow. And that is about all I have. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, I really appreciate it. And I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to get this PowerPoint to anyone that's interested in having it as well.
I've got a comment, Beth, that I'd like to make. On one of your slides, you talked about childhood obesity, that's those kids, as they grow into adults, if I read that right, 63% of them will be obese in their adult life.
Correct.
Because of where they started as a kid.
Correct.
Growing up, so that's the significance and the importance of it. And eating healthy, and of course, anybody's got little kids, sometimes it's a little bit of a struggle too, so you know, it's almost, there's got to be a compromise, because I know that having grandchildren is kind of interesting, when you have a three-year-old running around, you know, wanting something different to eat than what is necessarily healthy for.
Very true.
But...
I have two children as well, and sometimes it can be a struggle too, so I get it.
Nutrition aspect of it, and of course, the physical activity to me is a huge portion of getting that good balance.
Right.
Does anybody here, Tom?
I wanted to say that in part of my life, in my professional life, work at a nature center here in Moscow, and we do a lot of work to get kids outside and running around and doing all sorts of activities. We had the mayor out here this summer, doing story time. We have a summer story time series where kids, small children, come out and listen to stories, and then there's an activity for them so they can get out and do things.
That's great.
It's really exciting, and what I like about, one thing I like about it, is that it gives some of the childcare facilities an opportunity to kind of expand their space, because they may be in a small space where there might not be a lot of outdoor space near them.
Sure, sure.
And so they can load up in a van and come out and just let them go, and run, kids run around and do all sorts of things. And there are also some really exciting educational components. This, as an example, a few weeks ago, Emmanuel Lutheran Preschool was out, and there was a bunch of kids, and they were doing things, and they had their activities. And we're working on a construction project right now, and one four-year-old boy walked up to the contractor and said, how long is that tape measure? And he said, oh, it's 100 feet, and he ran it out and showed him how long 100 feet was. And then he said, well, how long's that tape measure? And the contractor said, well, that's 200 feet. And the little boy said, how many inches are in 200 feet? And the contractor just laughed, like you all did, and said, wow, there's 12 inches in a foot. And the kid said, that's like 2,400 inches, just like that. I mean, he's a four-year-old.
Holy cow.
Did the math instantly.
Yeah.
And surprised all of us. So I took all of our education staff, after I heard that story, I took them all, and I said, okay, here's the thing, we know that outdoor education and physical education is important, but most people are thinking how science and math is important, and here's a good example of how getting kids outside and being engaged and running around and playing can lead to these other skills, skill development. And so it was a neat thing for all of us to see, and again, just another example of why we think at the nature center, why it's so important to get kids out and engaged in doing things. So thanks for your work on that.
That is so true.
Yeah, I'd like to see the city be, I mean, we are a partner, I think, in these issues already, but we can always, you know.
Yeah, on your slide, you showed portions of fruit and vegetables. Is there anything in the child-adult food program that also includes whole grains? Is that a part of that as well?
It is.
Okay. I'm saying that we're in the middle of wheat-growing country here.
Oh, my gosh, absolutely, right. Yes, absolutely. It used to be the pyramid, and it's not the pyramid anymore, it's, right, right.
Sections of a plate approach.
Right, right. That's a good point, absolutely.
You need to realize that Art's the wheat guy, so that's why the question...
I'm with you.
My question is, so Ms. Oppenheimer, are you proposing that the city of Moscow adopt the type of standards that you've presented here in some form, and that it be a condition of licensure?
I think that, yes, I am, my short answer is yes. I think that if we can raise the standards of childcare at the community level, we're able to fit those community needs better. It's not going to look like Boise, or Coeur d'Alene, or Pocatello, or some of the other cities, but I think that if we can, it's just one other way that we can raise our standards of childcare, and ensure that our children, and we know that more and more children are in childcare because parents are working, that our children, while they're out of the arms of their parents, are in safe and healthy environments. And there's just little things that we can do, and I believe that if we can incorporate some of these health initiatives into our licensing standards here in Moscow, that we'll be that much more ahead of the ballgame.
For Gary, not that I will, you know, commit to getting behind this or making a condition of licensure or anything like that, but the way I think, Gary, to have this at least pursued to some point, other than just finishing tonight and saying, thank you for coming, would be possibly to put this before the administrative committee, and let those three council people have a chance to talk about it publicly and see what they think.
Certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, I would rather see it go that route possibly than having staff work it up and bring it to the council for a do you want to or not type thing. So that would just be my recommendation.
Wayne.
Well, since you're on the administration... Since you're going to do that, and I'm on the administration committee, let me ask you a couple of questions. You're proposing that we create an ordinance that has no penalty. And why have an ordinance? It's not a condition of licensing if they don't have to follow it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kraus, that is one thing that we went back and forth with Boise, and it was tough. And we felt that initially to start this, that if we could, it would give more buy-in, and again, it's more of that market approach, consumer market approach. And we feel that childcare providers, rather than the mandate of it, we felt that childcare providers, if we made it easy to do, we know that parents who are looking for childcare will know if they're in compliance or not. And it is a very good question of, I will tell you that I would probably lean towards, maybe there's a consequence, but what would that look like? We were trying to ensure that we were meeting the needs of all childcare programs, family and home and centers as well. So it was a tough decision on that end.
One more question, and then a comment. So, nothing's free. Have you estimated what the cost per child is to implement these additional standards?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kraus, we did a lot of research, and there is a lot of these policies happening nationwide, and we know that by incorporating physical activity, it doesn't cost anything to do that. They just need to know the how of how to do that. The nutritional standards, we know from research across the country, that if they just know how to incorporate and what to incorporate in terms of the nutritional meals, it doesn't cost any more money than if they're serving hot dogs.
Final comment would be then, that instead of creating an ordinance, it would seem to me that you let the market take its place, and that if this increased daycare activity, if it's a better product that the daycare centers are turning out, that that would give the competitive edge against those daycare centers. It's not costing them any more money to do it, but they're giving out, they're serving out a better product for the children. And so allowing the market to seek its level without creating an ordinance, to me, would seem to be a pretty good way to go.
Wayne, that would be a discussion of the administrative group.
Well, but I think they've probably discussed that, that's why I'm trying to...
Well, yeah, but she, well, that's something she doesn't need to discuss, because that's something in our own administrative commission, if it comes up, that would be a discussion amongst that committee. How's that?
I disagree.
Anybody else? Wayne, or Dan, John?
Well, thank you very much, Beth, for a nice presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and one more thing, if I may. If the city of Moscow chooses to explore this idea, Idaho AYIC is committed to helping with the process, and helping to see what this looks like. So we would be a resource if you choose to look at this a little bit further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to item number five, which is the City's Commission Report to Historic Preservation Commission. Michael Ray, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here as the staff liaison at Historic Preservation Commission, and as usual, we have a lot of great projects going on, and just here to tell you about those projects is Wendy McClure. She's the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and with that, I'll introduce Wendy.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert and council. I recognize many of you from serving on various commissions and task force in the community. We've had a pretty active year on the commission, and some ongoing projects, and that we've been able to further initiatives, and working on some new ones. And so you're going to have to show me the technology, right here, okay. So there's a list of our commission members. I'm the chair this year, and Nels Reese, the vice chair. One of our big projects every year, and you may have seen a copy around, is our Preservation Moscow newsletter. Also, I'd like to thank Wayne Kraus, who's our council advisor this year, and I think many of you have served as council advisors. Mike's handing out our Preservation Moscow, which is our annual newsletter, where it goes, right now, it's distributed primarily through the newspaper to subscribers, we're trying to figure out how to broaden our reach a bit. I was actually pounding the pavement, handing out copies to our neighbors the last few days. The report, or the newsletter, this year features Moscow's early years of development, its first 20 years of development from 1871 to 1891, and who some of the key players were. Also, Fort Russell is featured partly as a teaser for people, because one of our other main initiatives is working on updating the Fort Russell neighborhood that I'll talk about in a minute. We also, the newsletter also features orchid awards that we award every summer in conjunction with the Ice Cream Social at the Leittau County Historical Society. The awards recognize individuals and projects, and they're both, whether it's a contractor or an individual who's accomplished something in terms of forwarding preservation initiatives. And so you can take a look at some of those, the list there, and I don't know if I need, should I go down it, or no?
Just maybe name each project.
Okay, so I'll have to put my glasses on, I glance a little slow. Elizabeth Graff and John Dunn for their adaptive reuse of turnstone flats, which has associations with the Psykianna religion that was founded here back in the 1930s, and they've worked to upgrade energy efficiency and include a mixed-use building, which is very much in line with our comprehensive plan. Economic modeling specialists for the EMSI, for their adaptive reuse of the former Daily News building. Bob Wilson of Wilson Construction for his craftsmanship in restoring a shingle roof on one of the buildings that's on the National Register. Jordan Lowe, an architecture student who just graduated for an incredible large-format watercolor streetscape that really took over our whole studio space in the architecture program, that went across the room 25 feet in length. And Maria Maji for carefully maintaining a residence at South Asbury Street. So those are the individuals who received awards this year, and we always welcome nominations for the coming year if we've overlooked some projects. Another project is, was the installation, ongoing project, is the installation of plaques that you may have noticed on our, throughout our downtown district, our National Historic District in the downtown area, and so that it gives an immediate recognition to the building and the date that it was constructed. So you can see that. We also sponsor walking tours throughout Fort Russell in the downtown area, and sometimes up on campus as well. Nels Reese is usually the champion of that, sometimes I help him out, and we, here are just a couple of examples, but we've been doing this for a number of years to various community groups. Sometimes we just set up a booth at the farmer's market and just take people on tours during Preservation Week in May. That's, also, the Moscow Historic Preservation Commission partnered with city staff and the Chamber of Commerce, and submitted a letter of interest to be the host city for Idaho's Heritage Conference, this will be the second conference. We were selected among several competitors, and it'll be the second conference for the state, the first held in Boise last year. We expect at least 200 participants from around the state to come to Moscow. We're neck-deep in planning the conferences right now. A couple of us from the commission, along with Mike, are on the local planning committee for that, and so we're progressing with our planning, and the Chamber of Commerce is our partner, and others as well. Another big initiative is the, we are in the process of updating the Fort Russell District, which was established in 1980. You can see the red boundaries, they were really convoluted boundaries at the time, because in some cases, it was trying to avoid properties of people who were afraid that being in an historic district would mean they couldn't do anything with their property, which is not true. So we wanted to clarify the boundaries, and also include, actually, some of the original plat of the Fort Russell District, which is farther south on that map. So the red line shows where the existing district is, the blue line shows the potential new boundaries. This is a multi-year project. Our consultants that we've retained have re-surveyed at the State of Idaho Historic Preservation Office's request, 116 properties that are currently on the National Register as part of the original district, reevaluating them, and they've also uncovered about 320 more properties that would potentially be eligible, partly because in 1980, a property had to be 50 years old. Well, here we are in 2014, and so the architecture moves on, and styles change, and so we have a longer history. So you can see part of their report, I'm plowing through it myself, we just got a draft from the consultants, and we meet with them on Thursday to hear their findings, their initial findings, but you can see some of the sample pages from their lengthy report for Phase One and Phase Two. Some of the, it might be noted that some of the signature buildings in Moscow that we think about, the McConnell Mansion, et cetera, are not included in the district. So that would be, the proposal would be to potentially expand the district, and those are some of the examples. And other future tasks, we'd like to have a more comprehensive overview of buildings throughout Moscow, to see if they might be eligible for the National Register, or perhaps form a local register. And also, we're looking for a publisher, or at least a way, a funding to support republishing the famous and now out of print completely, and very difficult to get Moscow a great, good country. So I think those are, and we're in the process of visioning for next year as well. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Wendy. Does anybody like to, from council, like to make a comment? I think it was terrific work.
This is an excellent newspaper. I love stuff like this, I'm kind of a history buff anyway, so that's one of the things I love.
I'm kind of a history buff anyway, so that's one of the things I love to do is read history. Can't be any better than right here in our own town. Thank you so much, Wendy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good stuff.
Okay, we'll move on to our next quarterly report, Paradise Path Task Force. Tom Grunden, sir, you have the podium. Item number six. You've got lots of stuff to look at, man.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert and city council members. Thank you. Tom Grunden, Staff Liaison to the Paradise Path Task Force. And I'm happy to introduce Margaret Littlejohn, the current Chair of the Task Force, who will be presenting the fourth and hoped-for final quarterly report to the city council.
Margaret?
Hi, Margaret.
Hi. Thank you, Tom. Mayor Lambert and city council, I'm here to present the fourth report that you asked us to present last August, a year ago, to kind of update you on what we've accomplished during the last quarter of the year. And we did hold three meetings, so we're talking about June, July, August, and actually September as well. So we did hold three meetings during that time period. We did cancel one meeting because we couldn't get enough members there. And the July meeting was a very interesting one because we did go visit the Highway 95 East intersection with Steiner and White Avenue. The bridge that the Troy Highway has there, we're looking at it as an underpass for a pathway so that people can either walk or roller blade or bicycle under the highway to be able to cross at that point. And I think you're aware that there's no stoplight there. It can be very difficult for people to get across and it's very dangerous. And that, of course, the hydrologic study is going on right now with the consultant company. And we're looking forward to hearing the outcome of that study. So our accomplishments for the past quarter, we worked at the farmer's market and had a public booth three times during this past summer, June, July, and September. We added one new member to our group who is manning the booth in the photo there. We prepared and staffed an exhibit at the Palesfest on campus in August. And we encouraged the city to sign the orphan path segments that you approved, there were four of them, that you approved to make improvements on. And the signs are ready to install. Tom hopes to get that done this fall. We also encouraged the city to improve the path connection at Highway 95 and Highway Eight intersection. There's just not a good connection to the pathway there if you cross the Highway Eight. So Tom has lined up some reground asphalt to put on that pathway, which right now is either dirt or mud, depending on the weather. And we also submitted two questions for the Moscow Community Survey. We still have lots of unaccomplished goals or continuing goals. We are continuing to support the hydrologic study that's ongoing right now. And we're also continuing to encourage the city to finish striping the Paradise Path, which helps a lot for navigation during darkness or winter. We have collaborated with the city in the Blackbird Crossing, which we kind of prefer the word station for because we don't want people crossing to the East Side Marketplace, although there is an established kind of pathway there. So we think the word crossing kind of encourages people to do that. But we have posted a sign there and have advertised the Blackbird Crossing at the farmer's market. And right now, we're collaborating with Tracy May at the University of Idaho to fundraise for this project. And I think you know it's projected to cost about $35,000. We're also working on improving the Butterfly Garden at Berman Creekside Park, which we were instrumental in getting established a number of years ago. And it has unfortunately kind of migrated into being a lot of lambs ear and some weeds. So we're hoping to get it back to its original plan. And we'll be doing some work with Parks and Rec Commission to do that. We hope to host one or more Paradise Path Workdays for members and the public. And we have a number of projects that we'd like to accomplish on those Workdays. We also are collaborating with Safe Routes to School Program and the Transportation Commission to build a support for a pedestrian bridge over Paradise Creek on Third Street. We are encouraging the city to add sharos to other streets. We are very appreciative of seeing those on Main Street. And we hope that citizens will become familiar with that logo that's painted on the street and understand what to do. We also support the Mountain View Roundabout and other improvements that will improve that road for pedestrians and cyclists. The intersection with Sixth Street, of course, is a key one since that can be quite dangerous. We're also in the process of developing wayfinding signs for Paradise Path to help people find their way if they're unfamiliar with the pathway and find downtown or the university or East Side Marketplace or other major destinations. And we hope to add more orphan path segments to the ones that we've already approached you with, to get approval to do improvements on those as well. We're promoting bike path use, or path usage and bike tours to the membership, the public, and other interested parties. And we are already seeing that some groups in town are using Paradise Path to hold special events such as fun runs or that kind of thing. And we also want to again promote Paradise Path at next year's farmer's market and find better ways of marketing ourselves and our goals to the public and continuing to recruit new members as well. And one of our long-term goals, unfortunately, this didn't turn out quite the way I hoped, it actually shows a loop, the Paradise Loop Trail around the entire city of Moscow. I don't know what happened to the map here, but that is our long-term goal, to have a pathway that circles the city and allows people to get around on foot or on bikes or other non-motorized modes of transportation to get around Moscow. Oh, I see. It's adding pieces. Oh, there it is. There's the whole one. Okay. I didn't realize it was in pieces, so. Anyway, that's our goal to get around Moscow in the future. And our goal for this fall is to have you approve us becoming a commission. I guess in a month, we're going to come back and approach you with that request. Any questions?
Margaret, you've got other Paradise Path Task Force members with you tonight.
Yes.
Would you like to introduce them, have each one stand for the work that they've been doing with you?
Sure.
Just sort of take a minute and do that so everybody can see who they are?
Sure. Karen Clifford. She's been an award winner from the Commission Fair. And Margaret Dibble. Two very avid bicyclists. Oh, Jonathan? Oh, there you are. Okay. And Jonathan's our newest member. And you just approved that he became a member, so. And he, by the way, doesn't own a car. He gets around totally by bike.
Bike, all right.
So he is an excellent addition into our commission, our task force because he has a different perspective on traveling around Moscow.
Well, yeah, and I wanted to thank all those folks who worked on that task force as well. Walter, you have a question?
Yes, sir, thank you. Margaret, I appreciate the quarterly reports. You've managed to get your membership to attend. I understand the problem with getting attendance in summers. A lot of the commissions don't even try it. But you've done a lot of good work. You've got a lot of good plans. I would suggest that if you bring this forward in November requesting commission status, that you go ahead and formulate how that language would be in ordinance. If I remember correctly, you currently have no limit on the number of members that can be on the task force.
That's correct.
As one council member, I would suggest that I would not agree to an unlimited membership commission. So you may want to discuss with Tom and your other members about how large a group do we really need to accomplish things and put it forward as a proposal as part of your request.
Okay. Will do.
Other questions for Margaret? Well, thank you very much for the report and the work that your task force has done over this past year.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll move on. Item number seven, 1912 Center Quarterly Report, The Hearts of the Arts. We've got Dwight Curtis and Jenny Kostroff. Hello, Jenny. Dwight?
I'm not without skills. Okay, good evening. As you're aware, Heart of the Arts Incorporated has been managing the operations and fundraising and development of the 1912 Center since 2007. And quarterly, they come and give you a report and along with an annual report that we'll do here after the new year. And with that, I'll turn this over to Jenny Kostroff, their Executive Director, for her quarterly report.
Okay, this is exciting. I don't usually do a PowerPoint at a quarterly report, but this one, we need pictures. So I'm going to share pictures with you. This is our update. Here we go. This is what the building on the east end looked like before we started construction. Lots of boards and the windows painted broken. That one, is there a pointer thingy on this one? This one, okay, excellent. This one wouldn't close. And why that's important is we had pigeons take up residence in the top floor of the building. We named them Fiona and Kevin. And they lived there all summer very happily. So this window being open was a real problem. Not for Fiona and Kevin, but for everybody else. So, and people would come by and tell me, Jenny, you've got a window open. Yeah, yeah, I know. We're going to replace it. So we started our work on August 12th. We worked with Pioneer Waterproofing Company Incorporated out of Spokane, Washington. The project was bid for $133,700. And that project was to replace all 22 windows on the east end, repair the balustrade. And balustrade, when I talk about balustrade, it's this top little part. And the people on the Historic Preservation Commission understand the importance of such pretty stuff. So it keeps us on the National Register of Historic Places for being accurate and historical in the timeframe that this was built. We closed the parking lot on the east end, just the throughway. You could park in the handicap spots in front and you could come through the back. And we started window replacement on the 18th of August. And this is what I want to show you. Pictures of construction. Yes. So here's a guy in a window replacing it. This is a whole bunch of windows out of the building, which I thought was really cool to see them out, but then these were all brand new. And now they're all in there. And this took them only three days to do all of that work in there. And then they did all of the ceiling around the windows. So they went in very quickly. And it's amazing how quickly you can spend $75,000. But it was worth every penny. It's so fantastic. And here they are working. We did a repair on one of these. We think historically, we figured out that somebody crashed their car at some point in its pass into this side of the stairs because it had been rebuilt somehow, but badly. So we took it all apart and we put it all back together again. And now it is not in bad shape. It is in perfect shape and it will last a long time. So, and that's called a cheek wall. I didn't know that there's a name for the sides of the stairs. That's a cheek like these. Cheek wall. Yeah. I learn new things every day in my job. Here it is. All done. Pretty. Ready for use. Isn't that exciting? Come on, I've been busy.
Quick point, what happened to the pigeons?
Ah, the pigeons, I have more to tell you about them. So a board fell out of the front of the building, those lovely boards that we have. It fell, they fall inside, so don't worry about your safety. But it fell in during one of our bigger windstones. So when this window was replaced, Kevin and Fiona still had a way to get in and out of the building through the front. Then everybody told me, Jenny, you have a board missing from the front of the building. Yeah, yeah, I got that. So the guys replaced the board and I'll show you coming up. Anyhow, we'll continue our story because the Pioneer Waterproofing folks worked on this balustrade that has been off of the building since 2009. So it's very exciting. We have it fully restored, complete and replaced. And Idaho Heritage Trust is to thank for a considerable portion of that construction project cost, $4,500 that they promised to help pay for this. And it costs way more than that, so. There you go. And this work was done on October 15th. And we are under contract with Pioneer Waterproofing. Over the winter, they will be taking the balustrade pieces, just like these, off the top of the two entryways that go into the front of the building or the south side of the building because we're concerned about the safety of those pieces. They're all starting to get their mortar coming apart between them. And we need to figure out how many more pieces we need to create to restore them fully. So over the winter, they'll have those pieces in their shop to get them repaired and the pieces made. And then in April, they will be coming to install two balustrades on the front side of the facility. Since they've just done two of them, we know they know what they're doing. So that's why we put them under contract to continue that project. So we're not seeing the last of Pioneer Waterproofing and they're doing a great job. So I'm very thrilled with that project. In the summer, we did plaza concerts. Now, this picture is important. We did six plaza concerts and we also had an art opening. This picture was taken from the board that was out. I took the picture out that window on the top floor. So that tells you what you could see. Cool things looking down on the plaza from where the board was missing. So then, let's see. Oh, so we have the winter market coming up. Our first winter market date is November 8th. I have for everybody tonight, something special for your refrigerator. It's a magnet that tells you every single day to the winter markets. Unlike the farmer's market where you can wake up any Saturday morning and head to the downtown area and know there will be a market. In the winter, we're a little more picky about our Saturdays. So we've selected four before the end of the year, November 8th and 15th, December 6th and 13th, to do your holiday shopping. and 13th, to do your holiday shopping and your produce shopping because there's lots of good produce still at the end of the year, lots of squashes, apples, you name it. Then they start drying those apples, and when you come in February and March, you can still get apples, but they're going to be the dried kind that you can keep in your desk drawer. Very cool. So the winter markets are February 7th and March 7th after the new year. And I have magnets for everybody, take home, so that you can know when to come to the markets. 10 to 2 the Saturdays that are listed. So that's the winter market. That's our logo that Melissa Rockwood designed for the market this year. Now, here is the front of the building. Kevin and Fiona were flying around and flew out for an evening meal. And they put the board in. Now, this is a sort of sad story because these pigeons had made this their home. You can barely see it, but that's Kevin, right up there. And when I saw Kevin, I was very worried because I didn't see Fiona, but she was right up here. And they were both out. So I was like, okay, we did good. We gave them a place to live for a while. Now it's time for them to move on and find a new home. But this picture serves to remind you that while the east side is completed, this lovely south side still needs your support and donations. This is $200,000 worth of work and a lot more windows than we just put in. But the happy story is folks like Rotary of Moscow have donated windows in this south side, and you can too. For $1,912, you can sponsor a window. And I have people paying that $20 a month just for fun. So you can sponsor it over time if you would like to have a window with your name on it in the 1912 Center. And that's my report.
Very nice, Jenny, very nice. Walter?
Jenny, next time, try to be a little more enthusiastic.
Okay. I'll work on that.
Where does the stairway from the east parking lot lead? If you go up there and were able to open, I presented the doors, and if you were able to open it, where would you come, where would you enter the building?
This set of stairs?
Yes, ma'am.
This set of stairs, they'll point it out for people. If you were to come in off the parking lot, you would enter into what we are calling the second floor of the building. So this is the senior center right here. This is the Friendship Hall, the drop-in center for people with disabilities and their care providers and friends and such.
So it's a floor above the active area?
It's a floor above.
Okay.
Yes. It's accessible by the elevator, so if you were to come in the front of the building, you could take the elevator up. And right by my office and the senior center, there's this, it's a drywall that's been put over the stairs. Those will be opened back up again too. So you can have access to the second floor through here, through the front, and come up the internal stairs or take the elevator up.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Tom?
So, once the, on the south side, once the second and third floors are sealed up with those windows that you just showed us, then in theory...
We start construction inside.
In theory, we should start being able to make those second and third floor places inside usable.
Absolutely, yep.
Which will be really exciting.
The goal is for 2015 and 16 to complete the south side exterior, and then we would start fundraising for the interior work. Now, mind you, we've priced it out at about $2.5 million to do the interior work because right now, all the upper floors have no infrastructure in them, so, except for what was required to occupy the lower floors like smoke detectors and emergency lighting on each of the floors just has a basic wash of lighting. There's no mechanical rooms, no boilers, no plumbing, no electrical, nothing, so, and heating and cooling. So the whole upper floors require all that infrastructure as well as build out for custom stuff for spaces.
Thanks.
But we'll be reporting on that in the future.
Any other questions for Jay?
Are you ready for your magnets?
Very nice, yeah. I think we're ready for the magnets, Jay. Nice, exciting, enthusiastic.
Thank you.
I'm glad you saved the pigeons. Thank you very much.
Yes, Kevin and Fiona, they're my favorites.
Yep. Terrific.
Magnet for everyone.
Thank you so much.
Did you bring enough for everyone?
We're going to move on to item number eight while Jenny is passing those out, and it is a public hearing under proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter 6, to allow exceptions to lot street frontage requirements for existing lots of record. Michael Racer, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Like Mayor Lambert just said, basically, tonight we have a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the city code, and this is to allow an exception to lot street frontage requirements, and that's for existing lots of record within the city. And so, just to give you a little bit of background, currently, the zoning code has two provisions pertaining to minimum lot street frontage that were established in 1991. Basically, within our supplemental regulations, which is Chapter 6, Section 4-6-3, subsection A, basically states that every lot shall abut a public street right-of-way other than an alley for a minimum distance of 40 feet. And then we also go on to state other standards, basically for cul-de-sacs standards. We also have twin homes, townhouses within there, basically different right-of-way widths or lot widths that you're required to be adjacent to a right-of-way. And so, we also have subsection B, which basically states that every building hereafter erected or moved shall be on a lot abutting a public street. And then all such structures shall be located as to provide safe and convenient access for servicing, fire protection, as well as required off-street parking. So, looking at this issue, staff has identified approximately 36 lots around town, two of which are currently undeveloped, that basically abut a public right-of-way of 25 feet or less in width. And so, these lots were previously recognized within the city, basically through the plating or lot division process, and these are legal building lots when they were basically platted, divided, and we allowed construction on 34 of these lots. And so, basically, these lots are considered to be non-conforming right now, which means they may or may not be allowed to be developed or redeveloped should the existing structures be destroyed by more than 70% of the replacement cost at the time of destruction. And so, when you get into that type of language with a loss of all economic value of the property, staff gets concerned, basically have a regulatory takings when they're deprived of any economic value for these properties. And so, basically, we've prepared an amendment, the proposed ordinance before you tonight to address this issue throughout the city. And so, just providing one example of some of these lots within the city, basically have Logan Street here to the west running north-south, Mabel Street here, just to get your orientation. The name of this street is basically Hidden Lane. It's currently developed as 16-foot right-of-way width with 11 feet of basically gravel for access to these properties here at the end. And so you have four properties. These three are duplexes here, and you also have a, basically a parcel with a single-family dwelling that's currently landlocked. The only access is through Hidden Lane and then across this private property to gain access to that lot. Also have another example of Deacon Extension, which is a private driveway. It's not a public alley. And there's a, basically about 12 to 14 feet of developed width to serve three parcels which are accessed off of Taylor Avenue here, which is running east to west. And so you have basically a couple of single-family dwellings and a duplex on this property right here, which are only accessed off of Taylor via Deacon, basically Deacon Alley Extension there. And so with staff's proposed amendment, basically what we're doing or proposing is going within Section 6-3 of supplementary regulations under access to lots and buildings, basically stating that every lot, except as provided below, shall abut a public street right-of-way other than an alley for a minimum distance of 40 feet. And then, so this is currently contained within our current regulations, just breaking this out in a numerical format, so it's easier to read. And then we're adding subsection four here, which basically states that legal lots of record that have been approved by the city council prior to the adoption of this zoning code and which do not abut a public street right-of-way shall be accepted from this requirement where sufficient permanent legal access is available via public, right-of-way, private access easement or other legal means to provide safe and convenient access for servicing, fire protection, and required off-street parking. So with the addition of the latter half of subsection four, we don't need the redundant language in the section B there. And so, we've added that to the end of four. And with that, Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this proposed amendment, and that happened on September 10th of this year. And at the conclusion of the hearing, the commission tabled the matter until their September 24th meeting, at which time they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment to city council. And with that, staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing and upon consideration of testimony received, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that'd be read by title and published by summary. And with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you have about the proposed ordinance.
Tom?
One question I have is the 36 lot number that you gave us, does that include all of the flagpole lots within Moscow?
No. That would just be the lots that don't have legal access upon a right-of-way.
Okay.
Usually, flagpole lots, within the regulations, they're required to have at least 20 feet, can't exceed 150 feet for the length of a flagpole access drive portion.
Right.
But all of those lots would abut a public right-of-way by at least 20 feet.
Okay, so that answers my question then.
That's a separate deal.
So, those are pulled out of those, the 36?
Correct.
Because they have this other accessible 20-foot acceptable piece. Okay, thanks.
Correct. Dan?
Then in Part 4 there, are we going to need to go out and make sure that these 36 lots have a, you know, some legal instrument saying that they have access?
If they're redeveloped.
Only if they're redeveloped.
You would assume if they already have a house built on the property, they have some type of prescriptive easement or underlying access easement to that property across either a neighbor's property for the one instance that I had, you know, shown earlier. But they do actually have access on alleys, so there is access to those properties. If they were to be redeveloped, then sure, we would have to make sure that there's some type of private access easement or public access easement.
Or the two that aren't, that aren't developed. You have 34 that are and two that aren't, is that?
Yeah, the two that aren't developed have platted alley right-of-way, 20 feet in width, that provide access to those lots.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mike. I will officially open the public hearing. This is a legislative matter, and I will take testimony in favor at this time. Please state your name, address, if you would, and we'll give you three minutes.
Mayor Lambert, gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to address this committee this evening. My name is Rod Story. My wife Jenny and I live at 906 West C Street. 906 West C Street is adjoining this property. We share the largest border with the property, with one property that's undeveloped in this consideration. This spring, we purchased a property that would apply in this change in city code, and so that's why I'm here this evening to speak in favor of that change. What you should know is this property to us is a property that we'd like to develop that's within the city limits. This lot is at the west end of Resident Street. You may be familiar with that neighborhood. There's several undeveloped properties on that end of the street. I think ours is one of two that are included currently. It actually enjoins our current house, and we hope to develop it with the mind of guests and grandparents that might live in that location in the future. As you might know, our property actually spurred this consideration, and some other reason that I'm here this evening. In May, we presented a request to the variance committee for a change because there was a variance on our lot. The property that we have is zoned R3, and it's in a neighborhood of R3 dwellings, but the zoning kept it to a...
Your Honor? Yes? We're getting a little too specific on particular properties. This is a more general thing.
Yeah, very good.
He's starting to get into it like a...
Thank you very much, Rod. And I'll just remind the group, when we're talking about, we're talking about a legislative or an ordinance and not a specific property or concern with it.
Very good.
We're talking about a total sum of 36 lots, I mean, is what we're talking about, so...
Well, let me continue on then with a broader aspect. Obviously, the result of this process has been to make the city of Moscow aware that there's actually many more lots, many more properties than just mine, that have had inappropriate variances that will prevent future development, including mine. This is clearly a city-wide issue. More than three dozen properties are now involved, and so I would urge the city to consider a positive resolution. We believe that this building code change provides adequate instructions that don't require additional variances as far as what to do with both the empty lots as well as future development of these current lots. We also feel that that would encourage future development, which I think is in the best benefit of Moscow. Particularly, these empty lots, I think, would be of great value to build. We love living here. Thank you for choosing to make this a great community.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Additional testimony in favor? Please come forward and state your name and address for us, please.
Victoria Silver, 121 North Lilly. I'm unscripted, but I followed this in planning and zoning, and one of the issues was that if a person's property were burned down, they would currently have difficulty getting it refinanced because of...
Non-conforming use.
Yeah. And so, this would address that issue, which I think is very proactive of the city and very important to property owners. And so I support it because it seems like a pretty innocuous change. There's a lot of other things that come into play for any kind of redevelopment, but people need to be able to live in their homes and rebuild their homes. So I support it, and I would like to call that attention to that because it was looked at very thoroughly, and that should be acknowledged.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay. Additional testimony in favor? Okay, I will open up a testimony opposed or general testimony at this time. Please step forward. Would you like to speak, ma'am? Is for general testimony or opposed? You'd like to come up, come on up here and to address us, give us your name and address, sir?
Yes, my name is Clancy Potrats. I reside at 425 Sunset Drive here in Moscow. I've submitted written comments, and I'll only emphasize a few of the points that I made in writing. One flaw of this ordinance is that the ordinance does not distinguish between developed and undeveloped lots, yet they have far different and important characteristics. I'll skip the list of the characteristics, but only mention that the most recent, the most relate to neighborhood impacts. I will point out, however, that undeveloped lots do not satisfy the first whereas statement in the proposed ordinance. The first whereas statement is, whereas city of Moscow has previously approved the creation and development of, and then so on. Undeveloped lots may have had an approved creation, but obviously not an approved development. So unimproved lots don't satisfy the first whereas statement, which probably is a because type statement. Another flaw pertaining to undeveloped lots is that this ordinance does not recognize the inherent responsibility of the lot owner. City Attorney Robert Hall in a memo to Community Development Officer Bill Beltnapp, and this is part of the P... is part of the P and Z packet material, so it's public material, in reference to a particular subject lot states, quote, "The lot in question was created through the approval of the Highland View addition to the city of Moscow," which was...
Mr. Potrats, we're talking, we're not going to talk about specific lots, sir. We need to talk about...
I'm talking about the general lots that are under the category of undeveloped.
We're not, yeah, but we're not going to talk about any specific lots. We're just talking about the merits of the ordinance.
How can the city attorney talk about a particular subject lot?
Excuse me, excuse me for a minute, sir.
Am I not allowed to talk about a specific...
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, we'll just let the city attorney address it.
Okay.
Why would you like to...
Yes, Your Honor, the memo that he's referencing was an issue that was brought to me from the community development and the process of doing a variance and whether they could proceed that way. During my research, figured that that was probably not the appropriate way, and so I advised community development to proceed with another way to address the issue. And then that's where they came up with the potential for the ordinance, where they drafted the ordinance, and that's what's before you today. The memo that he's references was another issue that helped bring it to this position, but that memo is not relevant to this issue before you today.
So the relevance, the issue that he brought forward to us or through that memo has nothing to do with the circumstance tonight? Is that what you're saying to us?
Well, it was a definite issue, was talking about a variance process.
Okay. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about, okay.
Okay.
Hang on one second, sir. You got a question on this, Tom?
Well, so we have a letter in our packet. Is that what's being referenced?
Well, no, it's not. That was from a different, that was from planning and zoning. But if he wants to talk about the difference between developed and undeveloped lots, you know, that would be appropriate.
As long as it's not a specific lot.
Not as specific. He's just talking about the characteristics of developed and undeveloped lots.
Continue, sir.
Okay, there is a lot in town that met the requirement of undeveloped lots, and it would be one of the lots that were in your 36 list. Okay? I won't specify which one that is. It appears as a lot that was on an addition to the city along with other lots. This particular lot, along with the other lots, were in a plat that was approved by the city in 1927. There were other lots on the same, that only had access to an alley, and one of those lots, adjacent to the one specific one, was granted, or the owner of the lot deeded a 40-foot right-of-way to an alleyway that now became a street. Subsequently, the rest of that alleyway was deeded or received easements to become a This was after the plat was approved by the city. So if a lot was in a plat, it doesn't necessarily mean that it was a develop-a-lot because 25 years later, the only lots that were not, not buildable, were those that had not had city right-of-way added to the alleyway. So what I'm saying is that, that, let me just get a second here. The only lots in which no additional property were provided to the street access by their owners were, two of the, were lots that, that, I'm sorry, I need to back up a minute. All of the lots on this alleyway that had city right-of-way added to it were developed. The only ones that weren't were the two that did not get the city right-of-way. What I'm saying is, plating is not the same as being approved for building. The improvement for building for most of the lots were done 25 years later. In fact, the lots that were left out, for whatever reason, have never been approved My point is that it's primarily the responsibility of the owners of these lots to provide access, street access. It's not just because they're on a plat. Plating has changed from 1927. Now, if you have a plat, all the i's are dotted, then, and there will never be another lot added to the two lots that are identified by this ordinance.
Sir, could you go ahead and kind of wrap it up so we can move on here? I think we get, I think we pretty well get your point, and I don't know if talking anymore about it's going to make it any clearer for the counselors up here.
Well, let me, let me conclude this statement. If you, if you leave the lots that are unimproved in, as subject lots to this development, then, then approval of this resolution is, is... I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed. I find it very difficult to present general topics when, and it's the only way I can describe a significant collection of the lots that you have identified. If I talk about two specific lots, these are all the lots in that category of undivided. You, if you pass the ordinance with those lots included in here, there's no way that there will be any public input to the impacts that are made when these lots are, come before the city. All the decisions will be made internally and not externally.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, additional testimony?
I'm Christine Moffett, a long-term resident of Moscow. I live at 419 Sunset Drive, and I own property on Resident Street, 725 and 723. I find similarly to what Mr. Potrats brought out today, is that you're putting us in a very difficult decision to be able to provide you adequate testimony about an issue that concerns two lots that are in a unique situation, that are very different from the unique situation that you have with rebuilding existing properties throughout the city. And so I stand in strong opposition to your including undeveloped lots that could be developed in a proper format with proper road development and public input, which is really the intent of changing from a variance to the issue of special conditions. And if you read your packet carefully, and I know there's 68 pages there, and there's more to this story, because some of you might even remember that I was here a couple of years ago when we were talking about potential development of an area in this town that never even had a formal road. There is no official paved road up in this area where these two lots are. It was created by grindings. We were talking about grindings tonight. And then actually, the plating was done by the Otteness family that was also mentioned today. So it's kind of a long story to tell you. I would plead with you to not accept what the city staff has recommended, to combine developed and undeveloped lots into one fell swoop solution. I totally support the concept of development, but new development should be regulated, should have to conform to existing standards, and there are solutions that can be made. And if you pass this, there's a lot of congestion in the area of impact. And we were at a hearing, and the rebuttal to the hearing with P and Z, where they literally said, all you're going to have, all the developer needs to do with an undeveloped lot, if it's zoned for R3, that person can put the maximum allowances for R3 without having to provide road access, without having to consider the elements that are part of Idaho Code, which was passed two years ago, that asks for that all development be considered in this, the concept of a special uses, where you minimize the impact on other developments, you control the timing, you assure that the provisions for onsite and off-site facilities are adequate. That's all we're asking that you do, is separate these two instances, do not solve it with one fell swoop. And I also plead that you consider this, and don't waive your responsibility of three readings of this ordinance tonight, that you take the time to consider and read these packets, and perhaps might discuss with some of us that have done a tremendous amount of research for two years on this particular part of town. So with that, I would plead for you to not approve this, consider carefully, and do not approve it on your first reading, because you have that prerogative as city council members.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I think we're going to ask for more testimony. Thank you. Additional testimony, opposed or general testimony? Usually, I do not, but what I will do is, rather than have you contradict what these other folks are saying, I think what I'm going to do is let the council ask questions, and then we'll refer to our city attorney and community development director and planner.
Questions from the council that you want to address before I close the public hearing?
I have a question of Bill Beltnapp, but I'm not sure whether it should be done within the public hearing or not.
Well, we can close it if you do not have questions concerning...
My suggestion, if you are done taking public testimony, that you close it and then begin your deliberation.
Public hearing's closed. Go ahead, Walter.
Thank you. Bill, does the proposal for this amendment to the ordinances tonight approve those undeveloped lots for building?
It would. At least it would, if I could step back. It waives the requirement that they have frontage on a public right-of-way other than an alley. So it would waive that single requirement.
But other requirements remain?
All the requirements related to improvement of the alleyway, fire access requirements, setbacks, zoning code standards, all the other standards that apply to all the other lots in that zoning district would still apply. All it would do is waive this one provision that would state essentially, you know, every building here after erected has to abut a public street, which is the impediment to being able to develop the property. So it is waiving that single standard for the undeveloped lot or for any developed lot. Should a structure be destroyed, it's going to be in that similar situation.
Listen there. So therefore, public input would not be precluded with the exception of the street width question? Is that, is that correct?
Generally, in the development process, if we're looking at a undeveloped lot or a structure is destroyed and it's going to be reconstructed, the property owner would just apply for a building permit. And that building permit would be for you to ensure that it meets all standards and requirements underneath the code, and if it does, then that building permit would be issued. So there is not a public input process in the review or issuance of a building permit.
So if I understand, the process then would not preclude public input, it just wouldn't be part of the process, and effectively precluded, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would hesitate to say that there is a public input process in the building permit stage. I mean, somebody can protest and challenge a permit issuance. They can protest it based upon if they think it was improperly issued because it didn't meet a standard. There is an appeal process in that instance, but there is really not a public input process that is intertwined in the building permit and construction stage. At that point, the presumption is, like every other property in that zoning district, they have all the same property rights, they can have all the same uses that are allowed in that zoning district, and presuming that this is the one impediment, and it is waived due to its prior approval of the lot, then it would just be a building permit like any other lot in that neighborhood or any neighborhood in town.
One final question. I'm reluctant to ask this one, but I'm going to. Is this an end around?
Is it a what?
An end around.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Your Honor...
I think Rod understands.
No, the idea was, there was an issue that was presented on somebody, on a variance process for a couple pieces of property. When I looked at it, I saw that this underlying issue, that we couldn't proceed that way, but then we found out there was a bigger problem within the city, and I didn't look at it with any particular lot in mind and figure, how would you solve this for the city? And basically, we tried to use the concept of fundamental fairness, trying to treat similar lots similarly. And so when we came up with the idea for the ordinance, was what's one way to be able to make sure that these properties have the rates that their neighbors enjoy? And there was an impediment on access, and the city's going to make sure that there is access to those properties and that there's fire access services, that all the other rights or other health and safety issues are addressed.
I have a question for you, Rod, and I think it was answered, but might help the coun... I have a question for you, Rod, and I think it was answered, but my help the council out here, too. We were talking about 36 lots. Some of those lots have things built on them, some do not. Out of these 36 lots, a house or whatever burns down, person cannot rebuild, or is restricted to rebuild, or how will that be? The way that it's currently wrote right now is because it's a non-conforming lot, or a non-conforming use. Is that correct?
Correctly, I mean technically under Section B, if that, that lot does not abut a public street, then a building would not allow to be erected on that lot, and so they would not be able to reconstruct their residence if it's destroyed more than 70%, which is the standard underneath the zoning code. That if it's destroyed more than 70%, then anything that's erected or happens after that point has to comply with all the provisions of the zoning code. So, and it, quite honestly, it doesn't have to, you don't, it doesn't have, a structure doesn't have to be destroyed for that to have an impact. You can just go through refinancing on a property, and a bank wants to see a rebuild letter, and if we cannot issue one that says that should it be destroyed, it can be reconstructed, that can, that can compromise the ability to finance a property as well. So, I mean, you don't have to actually have a catastrophic loss for, for a non-compliance to have an impact upon a property. It can occur in other ways. But the way the code reads today, it should a structure be destroyed more than 70%, and it doesn't meet that standard of abutting something other than an alley, then it could not be allowed to be reconstructed underneath the zoning code. And if we cannot grant a variance to alleviate that, then there's really no other way to address that rather than a legislative change.
And there's a number of these lots that we're talking about that do have, in fact, buildings on them.
Yes, we identified 34.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Tom?
So it seems like the ordinance serves those 34 lots really well, in that if there's a fire, if there's a destroyed building, there's, there's some opportunity for those people to either refinance or rebuild, or whatever it might be. But it, it also sounds like there's a situation potentially with two lots that we can't talk about specifically, because the, the situation in a public hearing is we can't be specific about specific properties. And I, it sounds like that condition is frustrating for some people that want to speak about it and can't. And I think it's also frustrating for council members that need to make a decision on this and can't talk about it. And it makes me uncomfortable. My preference would be that we treat these as two separate issues. It seems like we have a situation with, with, we have almost two situations here that, that we're trying to do with one ordinance, and that's what I'm trying to, you know, it...
Gary, you want to address that place?
I just wanna...
Rod?
Yeah, I want to clarify it, figure out what's going on.
Yeah, having read the, the attorney's letters that he wrote to, or they wrote to, planning a zoning commission, I understand the point, but if you had one of the 34 lots that the improvements were to burn, or were to be destroyed, it would be in exactly the same position as any undeveloped properties that might be subject to this ordinance. It's exactly the same situation. What you have here is a, a different legal process that was pursued to begin with that has now been remedied...
By this ordinance.
To deal with the whole issue, yes. To deal with the entire issue of the non-conforming use, or non-conforming lot. So although the folks who testified want to testify about those particular incidents, and they may have some probative value, it is not dispositive as you consider this ordinance. You need to consider it on a community-wide basis for all of the properties that might be affected.
Bill?
Wayne?
Obviously, the discussion is about two undeveloped lots. My question would be, my assumption is that these lots, these two undeveloped lots were, in fact, part of the plat back in 1927.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
I'm thinking about the issue of spot zoning, where in a particular zoning district, we establish special uses for an area that is not applied to the rest of the properties around it. That would be a spot zoning. What it seems to me we have here is a reverse spot zoning, where we're trying to preclude certain uses on a property that are allowed in surrounding uses, and it also occurs to me that should one of these other developed properties burn down or otherwise be destroyed, now they're an undeveloped property and could not be redeveloped similarly. And I think writing code around specific uses that do not apply universally across all the other uses in the same zoning district is unfair and not an appropriate thing to be doing. In the whereas clause number one that was mentioned, it says specifically, "Moscow has previously approved the creation and development of several building lots that do not front upon a public street right-of-way." That indicates that the city did have in mind that these lots would be developed as building lots eventually. The fact that a current alley is substandard does not mean that it won't be brought up to standards, and is not significantly different, in my mind, from a flagpole access to other lots, and in fact, is, at 20 feet, is larger than some of the access to existing properties that are built. And with that provision, along with the other provisions, that the private access easement or other legal means should provide safe and convenient access for servicing fire protection, required off-street parking, pretty much covers the needs of a property being developed and built upon. So to my mind, this is the simplest, easiest way to approach the issue, to allow the use of land that's in a particular zoning district, without going over the edge and precluding property owners from the same legitimate uses of their property that anybody else in that same district enjoys.
Bill?
John?
I, I agree with everything Art said. With me, it comes down to the fairness for all of the lots that are involved, so that if something does happen, you can either get refinancing yourself, or someone that might want to buy your property can get financing for it. As it stands now, that would be very difficult. So, and then the also, the other part is that we have got 36 lots, we don't have 34 lots, and two lots. We've got 36 lots. Treat them all the same, and as long as all of the code provisions, as far as water, sewer, entrance, egress, fire, and all of that are met by whoever is going to either develop those lots, or just let them sit, I think that we have pretty much done the job that we're being asked to do. And I support this and would make a motion at this point, that we accept, or we accept the proposed amendment of Title IX, Chapter VI, to allow an exemption to lot frontage requirements for existing lots of record, and that we do it with the, under suspension of the rules for three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
And I'll second that, as long as we remember it's Title IV and not Title IX.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And then if I can do some discussion there.
Continue.
Does, does that meet all the requirements for a motion?
Yes.
I'll restate it, John, once we're done in discussion.
So, no, I just wanted to mention that the fact that we, if allowing building on, on platted lots, it promotes infill, which, you know, we've always talked about smart growth for, you know, however long I've been on council, that's been one of the things, is, is everybody trying to promote infill. And like Art said before, you know, when, when a plat is approved, whether it's in 1875, or 1927, or now, tho, those lots are considered developable. I mean, whether it was a bad decision at that point, it's still, those are still considered developable, and I think that we need to, we need to be fair in allowing somebody that use of their property. Everybody else has an equal use of that zone in that area. I think that we need to make sure that we're, we're being fair in, in allowing that use.
Wayne?
Seems like over the last year, 18 months, this council has gotten caught up in having to repair problems that have been created over the past number of years, because of different zoning and different ordinances, and the creation of, of different plats. And I see that this is another situation where the city needs to take care of some housekeeping. I think there were some bad decisions that were made in years past. If you want to talk about all these 36 lots that are not fronting on a street, that was probably a bad decision at the time. But what's done is done, and what's fair is fair, and what's equal is equal. And so that's why I will support John's motion.
Walter?
While I am sympathetic to the, to the neighbors of the two undeveloped lots, I, I agree with what a couple of other council people have said, that how can we say that 34 developed lots need legal access per code, and two undeveloped lots do not? I, I just think that to pass it for 34 means we need to pass it for 36. I, like I say, I, I understand the neighbors, not, not fully understand all of their reasons, but I understand the fact that they're not really tickled about it. I accept the council's comment regarding the end-around question, and appreciate it. So I will support the motion.
Another discussion? Okay, what we have before us is we have a motion to approve the ordinance and the proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter VI, to allow an exception of a lot, to a lot street frontage requirements of existing lots of record, and that this, this ordinance be approved and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's how you have it? And this motion was made by John, seconded by Dan. The roll will start with Art.
Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
Okay, that ordinance passes, five to one. Five ayes and one a no. And that ordinance number is?
2014-18.
Okay. What we have before us is ordinance number 2014-18, and ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code, Title IV, Chapter VI, Section III, allowing the amendment of the required access to lots and buildings for the previously approved lots of record, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay. With that, folks, we will move on to the next thing, which is reports. And I will start with the admin.
We finally met, and we only had one item, and we just heard it as a public hearing. So that was it. Thank you.
And Walter, Public Works and Finance?
I can do a lot better than that. We had multiple items that we, that did not come forward to council. The first was a report from Tim Davis on the, a proposal to go to single-stream curbside recycling in Moscow. We took his information, we found it not containing cost data for us, so we could, we could analyze on the basis of cost, the change from the separated bin curbside method we have now versus a single stream. So the Public Works Finance Committee asked staff to return to our next committee meeting, which will be next Monday, and to bring cost information regarding single-stream recycling. We also heard an item on the right-of-way trimming policy, where a question had been brought up about putting in that new policy that we adopted last council meeting, an appeal consideration, and upon hearing staff's comments about the need or validity of an appeal process, decided that it was not necessary and not warranted, and elected not to move it forward to council, so that item died in committee. We also heard two reports, Mr. Mayor. One from Les McDonald on the downtown signage. You remember that in 1980, the downtown was re-signed with white and blue signs of streets, names, parking regulations, and there was, those have all been replaced now with the new-style black signs. But the informational signs, the, what they refer to affectionately, I think, as surfboards, which have now been taken down and disappeared into oblivion, thank goodness, because they were so faded and marked over and everything else, are ready to be replaced with some similar black style ornate post, et cetera, that will provide a lot more information for walkers downtown. You can't read them from a car, but you'll be able to stand there and read them, and learn more things about downtown Moscow, historic buildings, et cetera. So that's moving forward. And then the last item we had as a report was from Les McDonald on the sidewalk project over at Jimmy John's. The fact that, to this point, ITD has not agreed, as they did with the EMSI sidewalk curb line revision, has not agreed to allow that at Jimmy John's. And if staff has later word than I've got, the last thing I heard was that they will entertain, if we wish to obtain it, a certified traffic engineer's assessment of the value of that right-turn lane. And Gary, I don't know if a decision's been made if we're gonna pursue that or not.
We are still in discussions with ITD and seeking out some opinions of some professionals, so hopefully we'll have that taken care of within the next day or so.
So the sidewalk will, at this moment, will not be widened, and the curb line will not be moved out, however, the issue is not dead, and we have time to work through that?
Yeah, we've not obtained authorization from ITD to extend the sidewalk into the configuration that would be preferred in the area. But there are some interim steps and interim measures that can be made, so that work either is not lost, or we have the option of continuing on into the future. So that's what we're looking at right now.
Stay tuned.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Okay, Wayne?
Farmers Market met on October the 8th. They had some public comment against the 200-mile radius for the Farmers Market. If you recall, the Farmers Market originally came to council at the beginning of the year recommending 100 miles, and it went to, actually, it was last year, I guess, and it went to 200 miles. And there was also some written and oral arguments against bringing very large farms into the market, because of the competitive nature of extremely large commercial farms. And there will be an additional Farmers Market Commission meeting on October 29th to discuss policy changes that they may see to put forward to the council. On a great note, the Moscow Farmers Market took the number-one spot for farmers markets in the state of Idaho, as voted by the Farm Land Trust. And the Clearwater Economic Development Association Finance Committee was met, would met last Thursday, but I missed that in lieu of going to the Water Summit.
Okay. Art?
We heard from the Paradise Path Task Force tonight, and so we're all up to date with them. Sustainable Environment Commission meets tomorrow, and there's not been a whole lot of news of late out of the URA.
That's that. Dan?
Well, on the 7th, we met with the Tree Commission, and there was some discussion about the appeal process that we denied at the last Public Works Finance Committee, so that, that went by the wayside. But they talked about, you know, possible different species in front of where we are widening the sidewalk by the EMSI project, and, you know, we may see something different there as far as, as, you know, where most of our urban forest is, is pretty, Art's probably got a good $3 word for... urban forest is, is pretty, Art's probably got a good three-dollar word for everything being the same.
Uniform aging-
Uniform, there you go. Anyway.
Well, you can always count on Art.
Always count on Art.
These are four-dollar words.
Anyhow, we're talking about maybe having some things, different species down along that area, kind of maybe even helping them identify their entrance. I think they're also, they also speak in favor of the widening of, down by Jimmy John's, to replace those trees that were removed down there, because it's going to be difficult down there to have anything very large with the, the limited sidewalk, and still want to have the, the movement we want there. Art's Commission met on the fourteenth, and, you know, basically a lot of general business, but one of the things that I know, I know Tom likes it, and a couple other folks, is the Thirty 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 event's going to be coming up again soon. We'll probably hear more about that before it comes up, because my daughter helped stamp and mail out all the canvases there-
All right.
...last week. So, going out to the artists, and we'll be seeing that pretty soon as far as available for purchase.
Good deal.
John?
Yeah, I've got a couple. We had a Human Rights Commission meeting on September sixteenth was the last one. And the Human Rights Task Force Report was given, and we had a day at the Farmers Market. That was a big success. The Social Justice Forum was focused on renters' rights, and there was a panel of people that included any number of people that might be involved in renting, including people that did rent, attorneys, and landlords. And about thirty-five people attended, which was a pretty good deal. And then, coming face-to-face with hate, a search for a world beyond hate, Moscow High School did a presentation on nine-twenty-five that came out well. The U of I presentation, they're still working on it. The problem seems to be finding time for the space to hold the meeting. And then, my favorite, says it right here on the agenda, queer music, LGBT music presentation, happened on September sixteenth at the Kenworthy. Once again, I heard I wasn't there, I heard it was successful. The Human Rights Commission had a table on October, will have a table on October twenty-fifth at the Farmers Market. Looking forward to that. And then the Northwest Human Rights Commission is having the annual meeting at the River Point Campus, Southern, and then that will be sometime this month. And the Southern Poverty Law Center person will be the speaker. They did not know who that was going to be. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission was a lot less crowded than that. And essentially, the only thing worth reporting that is out of the ordinary is that there was a review of the proposed amendment of Title Four, Chapter Three, of the Moscow City Code to allow a reduction in setbacks for motor business in that district, in the motors business zoning district. And the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted some clarification concerning the ten-foot setback for structures, and hopefully will be discussing, or they will be discussing that on Wednesday evening. And as Art previously said, the urban renewal, we're still waiting for some information to come in before the next meeting. That's what I have.
Walter, add one thing, and then I'll come back to you, Tom.
Yes, I do need to mention that the Palouse Basin Aquifer, Aquifer Committee met on Thursday, immediately preceding the Water Summit, which was, most of you, several of you attended. And at Pback, a couple of things of note. One was that Steve Robichon presented information on field studies that Pback might wish to pursue in the future. In discussing how best to proceed, they formed a subcommittee to develop a request for proposals for a project to compile and review recent alternative supply and conservation studies conducted outside of Pback. That way, they hope to get a single comprehensive document that can be used as a decision tool for selecting projects that meet Pback's primary goal of developing a basin-wide water supply and use program. The other item is that at a recent breakfast meeting, I made contact with the new Vice President of Research for Washington State University, and have open dialogue with him. He was nice enough to get back to me. And we're working on setting, setting up a meeting between his research executives and U of Is, and representatives of Pback, to work toward attempting to get university professors doing research to make proposals to Pback for us to fund graduate students to do work in the basin. Thank you.
Tom?
Lee, I wanted to point out a few things. There was a I-walk or walk-to-school day that took place last Wednesday, the eighth. A lot of kids walking to school. I slept in a cardboard box with family promise the Friday before last to help raise awareness about and raise money to fight homelessness on the Palouse. And then, last week, the, I think it's, it was pretty exciting, while a bunch of us were at the Pink Tea, and I'm sure you're going to mention that in a moment, so I'll, I'll skip talking about that, but the Moscow Bears beat Sandpoint in the division.
Oh, soccer, yes.
Soccer. And they're moving on to state, so that's exciting. They were making the rest of us proud. So, that was an exciting thing. And I think that's, that was the last thing that I was going to mention. There was-
They play Thursday in Post Falls.
Yep. It was, that's right. So, it was, it was also exciting to attend Bruce Pittman's retirement party on Friday night. A lot of us were there.
Everybody had a bunch of reports, it seemed like, today to talk about. And then we talked back-to-school walk, International Walk to School Day, it was on the eighth of October. I was at McDonald's School for that. The Pink Tea was on the fourteenth. And then we had a city, we had a table for that. We had, a number of us were there as well. On the sixteenth, I had three events. The Moscow Garden Club, who I welcomed, and they had a state representative here. We also had the Water Summit, and I did some remarks with that. And we also had the Mayor's Arts Award, Awards that evening, which was very nice, and was attended by-
It was a good time.
-Dan here, because he's the liaison of the Arts Commission. And then, of course, we had the homecoming parade on the eighteenth, which was fantastic, the biggest, I think, parade that we've ever had here, which was very-
Walter riding in the cop car.
Hundred-and forty in-
Street sweep.
And that's all I got. Gary, do you have anything?
No, sir. I think we're fine.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess and reconvene an executive session, Pareto Code sixty-seven dash twenty-three forty-five, parentheses, one, parentheses, F. So, move.
Second. With no intention of reconvening afterwards.
Aye? Opposed? Boom. Will not reconvene.
Well, no.
Well, it's a different deal.
Normally, you technically, you come out, and you just say that you met that. It only takes a minute.
Yes. Your Honor, we do need a roll call vote on an executive-
Oh, you do? Okay.
Please.
Start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, it's nine nineteen. We'll reconvene at nine twenty-four.